Meeting to order. I invite those who are willing and able to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mic get up.
Yep, mic get up. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Thank you, Mrs. Powell, do I have a second?
Second.
I have one item, I believe we are looking at the, we have, instead of the July 15th budget year-to-date, we've got the June 15th, so Deb is gonna try to get the right one in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other thoughts or questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to number four, visitors. Sorry Deb. You're right in the middle of something.
Nope.
Nope, we're good. All right, so we'll move on to number five, the consent agenda. Looking at number 5.1, all the way through 5.101 on the FAB with the donations, are there any items that someone would like pulled out to discuss individually? We're all good? It's 5.1 on the front, go over to the back, 5.101. So we're good?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure.
Yep. All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Mr. Botts, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say that we have Val Carmody will be leaving the district, she is going through some health issues and going to semi-retire, so I would like to publicly thank Val for her 20-plus years of service to the district, and hopefully she'll be able to come back and help out, she's wished to do some volunteer work and things like that when we need it, and maybe even sub a little bit in the office, so I really appreciate Val and all of her service to our students and staff over the years, and then also just on the donation, thank you to the Edgerton Dutch Festival for their donation to our band.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other thoughts or comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Maybe I'll just add to, Val, we do our recognition luncheon once a year, so next June, we'll give her her clock and things like that, so we'll call them back. So anybody who retires late, we come back, we'll bring back, so.
That's awesome, thank you. Very much. All right, moving on to number six, 6.1, the administrative report, 611, Jackie.
I think Deb, we might wanna skip that right now until she gets her report.
Oh, cuz she's working on that 2000, yes. All right, so we'll go to 6.2, and then we'll come back to 6.1. 6.2, school board members, any?
Negotiations, they've met, planning to meet again, when was that, in another two weeks?
Yeah, I can't remember, I have it in my calendar. Is it next week already?
Maybe next week already.
It might be next week. Was it before the fair? Well, not the week of the fair, I don't think was it. It was after fair. It was Monday after the fair. This is a summer ago. Wanna say. Hasn't popped up yet on my phone, so. Okay, good, thank you.
Other than that.
That's it. Thanks for your work on that committee, that's a lot. All right, awesome. Gonna move to you?
Yes.
All right, 6.3.
Just a community, our facility task force met last Wednesday, Jeff and Randy and Lance were the, no, Tammy, Lance and Randy were in attendance at that. We got to finally, everybody's wanted to see numbers, and so we had some numbers and some options for them to look at, and we kinda did another little dot thing to look at where we're at, and it seems like they're still kinda leaning towards looking at a new elementary school. We have asked for, you know, to fix up and repair Brown and Hill as they are and add on the spaces, but the task force doesn't seem to feel that that's the way we wanna go. So what our next step is now, and tonight we'll talk about it later in new business, with the survey, we're gonna work on developing a community survey, and we will be sending that out to the entire school district, and we're gonna be getting some feedback from what the community thinks. From that information, the task force will have that before they make their final recommendation to the board, which I think we were hoping for about September 26th, but I think this survey's gonna run into October, so we'll probably be looking at mid to late October when we'll have the community task force recommendation, so. But after tonight, when, if the board decides to move forward with the survey, that'll begin being developed, we'll be getting tax impact information, I believe that our demographic survey will be close to being done by August 15th, so we'll have some other really good information for the task force. I have been told that sometimes when all of that information gets presented and they start bringing that, that the board holds a work session and is there to listen, so that the task force isn't getting all this information before the board, so you're hearing it at the same time they are, so if you have August 15th available, I probably will probably set that as a board work session and ask you to attend that meeting to kinda hear what they're hearing and going through with that, so. That'll be a little bit different, but I think the whole board should probably look to come to that one. And other than that, I, you know, it's, I don't know how much information you wanna get into, it's kind of like, right now, they're cost estimates, and they are not the low end, I mean, they're kinda the high-end cost estimates, and it's really about 22 million to about $28 million, elementary school, depending upon what you want, how you want it, what we're looking at, so task force is weighing all those things again, and ask some good questions for us to make sure that we get that information out there, so. Tammy and Lance, I don't know if you wanna add anything?
Figure had the demolition cost in it, too. It did not have assailant land.
No.
Which, we're not in the real estate business, so we don't know. And that stuff we'll probably do down the road, we're talking with Rod.
And then it didn't have the, like, the fixtures and the equipment, right, or something like that in that number, I mean, but it, you know, that?
He was gonna look into that. He didn't know for sure, I would think that'd be unusual, but it could be that that, I also know those numbers are high-end, they figure at $350 a square foot construction and costs where you can do other things to lower some of those numbers, so there's a number of things that we're gonna be looking at, I think, and that's where we'll find out from our community survey what the tax impact and tax tolerances will be, to find out what they are, so. And just so the whole board knows, Mr. Anderson, the activities director, did throw out a turf football, turf field proposal for them to listen to and think about, so that's something too that might be on a community survey, but we just thought, why not put it out there? It's not a, I mean, it happens, we, you know, we get a lot more.
That's what that group's for, is there, to help us make decisions, so we brought it in front of them.
And it, it's not anything, if they say, just no, or, but I think they were like, well, you can see with the survey, but it probably doesn't fit with this project, and that's fine too, so we'll just do that, but we thought it would, better ask, better to ask and just say that, do that another way, and that's fine too, so. But when you're doing big projects and you're looking at everything, and sometimes it's cost-effective just to put things in there, so.
We also did have in there the security stuff, down here, where my quarry switch, if we could get the grant, what was that, Tammy? Five to 800,000?
The grant is up to 500,000. The costs were 850,000, so we might be able to get a majority of that, if we can get that grant, which last board meeting you guys said, and that, just to update you on that, that's gonna be due August 29th or something like that, so we will, I've worked with ISG, when I get that, we should actually be able to see the proposal probably at the August board meeting, cuz you can't submit anything before August, it's like, it opens and I'm sure their system is gonna crash when every school puts their application in. They said first come, first served, I'm like, how are they gonna do that?
What times it open, men they?
I don't know, but I tell ya, ours is going in, ours is going in at that time.
Watching the clock. So then on August 15th, is that 7 o'clock? Because that's what you've been?
Seven, yeah, 7:00 PM. I don't see that one probably not gonna take two hours, but then again, maybe it will too, so. We did take 1 hour and 58 minutes to have the last meeting, so, but we kept it within our two-hour timeline. Yep.
All right, thank you.
We scratched it in there.
Anything else?
That's, you know, again, I think we're in mid-July, things have been pretty quiet, but we're set with staff for the year, so nothing, nothing, no changes going on there, so last year, I know we were hiring in August, and hopefully we won't have to do that again, but I think everything right now is in good shape, so staff is on board, we're there, the instructional coaches start doing some training tomorrow, and so, you know, we're, people are trying to take a little time off and recharge the batteries, so.
And the road's done.
And the road is done out there.
It's exciting.
The summer projects are really starting to get in full swing, I know that there's a number of little things, tennis shed and baseball shed, the trees are put in, tennis courts, we're still working on when they're gonna get out here and get those things, those little things that need to be done with that, so that's there, but should be ready to go. Bathrooms at Paulson Field should be ready by football, they'll be remodeled and redone, so, yeah, we've got a lot of, lots of stuff going on, so.
Okay, good.
All right.
Thank you. Anything else?
Melanie, anything?
No.
Okay.
Any questions for the superintendent? All right, we'll go back to 611. Jackie?
Budget year-to-date, we're at 98 percent, we still have a few fiscal year 18 bills to pay, there shouldn't be a lot, all the salaries are in there for the year, so all the salaries are updated, so hopefully we only have about 340,000 more dollars of fiscal year 18 bills that come in, I don't think we'll have that many, but I can't say that for sure.
I don't want that many.
I don't either.
So the next phase now will be the audit, I mean, these will start to close out fiscal year 18, so then we'll start proceeding with our audit, which November?
Last year, I think they were here in October, in September, I'll run the first close, so by the September board meeting, I should be able to have one of these for fiscal year 19, but I can't do one until I run a close because 18 and 19 are combined until I do that.
And expenditures are nice, just to remind everybody, expenditures are kinda, this is where they're at, revenues won't be balanced out for almost two years, which is...
I did look at it today, so, I didn't see any big glaring errors that I made.
That's good.
But, well, Jackie and I have talked, I mean, there are a few things that, and a few things in our budget that kinda caught us off a little bit, one was special education, transportation is, was $140,000 above what we were anticipating, so we've been doing a little looking into what that's about, and we'll continue to refine that, that was the transportation, and there were a couple of things in transportation that we were looking at, was there something else that, I forget, was there something else that's...
I think that was the only.
It was the major one.
Yep.
Well, that's 100% reversible, correct?
It is, two years from now. That's the problem, is that, you know, we assume it now, we pay the bills, but then it has to come back and all of that, that's why it's, the revenue side is always the one more interesting, so. But I think, you know, our budgets are getting a little tighter, and so we're watching this really close, and if we have to make any adjustments for next year, we'll, we'll see what comes out in the audit, and continue to watch our budgets, but it is getting tighter, so.
And we do, I do have, we do have more controls in place for this year, so I can keep better track of the high school budget and the elementary budget, I've had to change all the codes and add another three, but, so, so therefore, when someone asks me, what do I have left of my budget, it won't take me three hours, it should take me 10 minutes.
Good. All right. Any questions for Jackie? Any questions for Jackie? All right, good, thank you, Jackie. All right, we're gonna move on to number seven, old business, 7.1, the second reading of Learning Readiness Handbook, do we, whoops, sorry, just dropped your cord here, can we do these all together?
I think so.
Oh, thank you very much, that's good. So we're gonna look at the second reading of the Learning Readiness Handbook, second reading of the Elementary Handbook, second reading of the Middle School Handbook, and the second reading of the High School Handbook.
There were no, just a few minor changes were added, I think there was something with testing that had to be added to all the handbooks, and...
We went over those last time, too, right?
Yeah, so.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve all of those handbooks, the Learning Readiness, Elementary, Middle School, and High School? Thank you, Mrs. Wees.
I can go first.
Thank you, Mrs. Wees, for the motion, and thank you, Mrs. Powell, for the second. Got that, Deb? Any other discussion on the handbooks?
I just have a couple of questions on, just cuz somebody happened to ask me about it the other day, and I didn't really pay attention the last time that we read this, but again, I knew that we had approved, like, the new, oh, like, honor system or whatever, but they had asked if we were still going to do the valedictorian and salutatorian, and I kinda forgot about it until I was looking at all this stuff again today, to find out prior to the meeting, but are we, is that something, do you know, Melanie, I guess since Cory's not here to answer, whether or not we're still gonna have that part?
Not sure on that.
Okay.
Sorry.
I just remember talking about it when he proposed this a few years back or whatever, and I know we said we were fine with changing that, but I thought all of us, or most of us, agreed that we still thought that that was an honor that those kids should have, but I guess, I mean, I'm fine with this, and I don't think it had said in the handbook anything about valedictorian, salutatorian anyway, because I think when I was looking back, everything that was crossed out, you know, was what was in there prior to, I guess, but that was just a question, and there was something else.
My understanding of the valedictorian, salutatorian, when he proposed it and we went forward with it, was that would no longer exist, that we wouldn't have that, those specific designations.
I'm looking, page five or page four of the High School Handbook does have those changes from the honor chords, calling it distinction in honors, to the summa cum laude, mega cum laude, and so they've changed the titles of that.
But there was nothing ever in there, in last year's handbook, about valedictorian and salutatorian, and so we just still had that. I just wanna, just, I guess, just understand.
When we changed it, I believe it didn't affect the current high schoolers, so when we changed it, he proposed it to a year that didn't affect those who are currently in high school, so once that last, those freshmen graduated, which would be last year.
But I just thought that there was, that that still was gonna be included, cuz I think he had said that he didn't have a problem with that, but whatever, I guess, I just wanted to make sure that I can confirm that that is done, I guess, to the few that have asked.
I, it's not in the handbook, so, but I can double-check.
You're okay with approving the handbook and then asking him later, is that what?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's fine, I guess I, you know, not that they probably couldn't ask him, but I guess it was just something that they had asked me, and I kinda forgot to follow up on my end.
Have them talk to Cory, but you're okay with the handbook, though?
Yeah.
Did you get your second question?
And then there was, then there was just something else on the credit for learning, it seemed like, when I was reading the paragraph, like, it kind of cut off, like, and maybe I didn't read it properly, maybe all of it didn't get brought over, I guess I don't really know how it was, you're gonna ask me, where it was at?
Now, I did download a different little version this afternoon.
Okay. So, yeah, like, I wasn't sure if that's how it was gonna end, it just kinda says, such as community, and then it just seemed like it more needed, I just, again, I know that it'll get done how it needs to get done, but I just...
Page four, the high school. We also have a credit for learning policy.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
That'll be a summary, so we'll make sure that that summary accurately reflects.
I mean, like I said, I just wanted to point that out before we went to print, that it just didn't seem like a complete sentence, I guess, that was the only thing I was gonna point out.
Right? Does it seem like it?
Okay. Again, it was just kind of something that I was looking at very quickly.
It's like there's a number, it's like the purpose in the actual policy says, for experiences such as community organizations, work-based learning, and other education activities and opportunities, so.
And maybe just something, like I said, just didn't get highlighted and transferred over.
It seems like it's cut off, so.
It's not, yeah, which, like I said, is not a major deal.
So like, he's gotta pull that faster than I do.
Yeah.
So that's a grammatical thing that she can fix?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Can we pass it without?
Yes, yes, we can. So Deb, we can get that later, correct? I mean, we can get where, exactly where it's at later?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
That was it, that was, that was my two things. Now I can delete my note.
It's okay. All right, any other discussion on the four handbooks, the Learning Readiness, Elementary, Middle School, and High School? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving those handbooks signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries, number eight, moving on to approval of Policy 620, Credit for Learning.
I believe we're supposed to have this policy, it's a required policy and mandatory policy, and so here it is. Basically, what this does is stipulate what credit we'll accept and, as a district, and this is pretty much MSBA's, and I think we've, Cory wanted to make reference to it in the handbooks too, and that's where it was like, well, we don't even have one, and then we started looking, and we're supposed to have one, so here we are, putting in a, getting in a policy that we're supposed to have, so, and this just basically states what you're gonna accept, and makes total sense, so. I recommend we just have one reading of it, and we don't need to do multiple, right? So I recommend approval.
Okay, anyone have any questions or comments or concerns? All right, do I have a motion to approve Policy 620, Credit for Learning? Thank you, Mr. Botts, do I have a second? Second. Thank you, Mrs. Talbert. Any other thoughts, comments, or questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving Policy 620, Credit for Learning, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. 8.2, Review Building Usage Rental Service Charges.
This is one we should probably do every year, but something caught my eye this year is, I think the facility rentals and all that is probably fine, but when you get down to the custodial costs, that caught my eye, $22 an hour, this is most likely going to be outside of school hours, which is gonna cost us time and a half, when it all comes down to it, that's gonna end up costing about $29 an hour to have a custodian, and we're charging 22. So I, I mean, we can leave it there, but I thought we should maybe move that up to $30 an hour. We may have had some organizations that have already reserved the building, and I don't think we retro, I mean, but going forward, we should probably up the custodial and food ser, food services to her, but I think they should probably, you're gonna see similar costs there in our AV, those personnel, I think $30 an hour would probably cover all of our costs, for sure, and then the equipment usage and equipment setup, you know, $10 and $15, it seems like, again, this was done a while ago, I just recommend, I just throw out $25 and $35 for setup fees, but you guys can make them higher or lower if you want, but that one, I just thought probably should be something a little different there. An example of the use, I mean, our tables, but it takes, you know, if you're gonna set up the commons area with 50 tables, it takes a crew time to put that up and take that down, so it's, you know, it just, and there's wear and tear on it, it just seems like not an unreasonable thing on that part, so.
So what do they get for going to that church here? Is it the same as what's on here?
I would say.
Yes, they get charged, they get charged over, what, group three? Group three, yep, the nonprofit. And then they get charged custodial fees of $22 an hour, and they also get charged because they rent a couple rooms for Sunday school and daycare and stuff, so.
Well, that's why I just was wondering.
Yeah.
Well, you can't do it under, under your cost, you have to do it above your, for your cost, but we can't do it for losing money.
Right.
Right. And like, it hasn't been done for a while, and we probably won't, maybe we should look at it every year, but you may not change it now again for, I hope I don't forget, but...
Wages will change every time you negotiate.
A little bit.
If you're giving them an increase in wage.
But instead of $8 an hour, you may just up it a dollar an hour, you know, every couple years, just to keep it, keep it going.
So this just says to review, Kevin, are you looking for a motion to approve what you're recommending then?
Sure. Yes.
Yes, please.
I should be more definitive, yes, I would like...
I gotcha.
As, for that.
And that's where the discussion comes in, if they're, if you agree with the prices, if you think it should be more, if you think it should stay at 22, or, I mean, that's up to...
So what did you say, you said 30 for the personnel, and then what did you say for equipment usage and setup? I know you had it in your letter, but...
Yeah, usage, I would like to see $25 a session, and the setup of $35.
I make a motion to, Kevin is asking for our building usage, raising our building usage prices, the service charges.
Thank you, Mr. Roy, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Botts, any other discussion or comments or questions?
I think it should look at it every year.
Right.
It's not that hard to do one.
All right, hearing no other discussion, all those in favor of accepting the building usage rental service charge changes. How's that?
Pretty good.
Signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. 8.3, Approve Surplus Technology Equipment.
We, you know, we're upgrading, we, we got, upgraded our iPads for students, we updated some Chromebooks and, for some staff and different things, so when you're bringing in 300 new devices, I don't, we don't wanna store them, and we're not gonna use them, so we can actually get them recycled, they will give us something for some of it, there's a few where we have a few screens that we may have to pay to get rid of a couple things, but for the most part, these devices, somebody will take them and give us a nominal amount for them, but in the past, they used to offer and sell, but then they didn't work, they were calling Josh and wanting support, and it just seems like sometimes you just gotta, you know, these are old, they're not, they're not gonna serve our purpose anymore, so we would just, just soon, surplus them and move them on.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the surplus technology equipment? Thank you, Mrs. Talbert, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Powell, any other thoughts? Questions, discussion, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the surplus technology equipment signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries, moving on to 8.4, Approval of Lease with Heartland Colony.
We do this every year, it's an agreement we have to offer their, the program out there, and they provide the space, so I would recommend we... And this one also.
Yep. Do I have a motion to approve the Heartland lease?
Somewhat.
Thank you, Mrs. Wees and Mr. Roy, thank you for the second. Any other thoughts? Discussion, questions, comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the Heartland Colony lease signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. 8.5, Approve Membership to Minnesota School Board Association.
Every year, and again, you know, there's also our policy... Every year, and again, you know, there's also our policy update manual, and they do a lot of lobbying and advocating for school districts, they provide board training, they will help out with a number of different things. They've actually added some staff now, Terry Morrow, who's an attorney, so we can actually call him for legal counsel, which will actually start to save us for some of the little things, I've actually started using him instead of Ratwick when it's some of the minor stuff, because they won't bill us for, for the fifteen minutes it takes to look into a contract question or into something else, so I think value added with their service, and MSBA does a good job helping school, helping the school board and school districts, and so, again, I think it's a worthwhile membership that we have there.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, do I have a motion to approve the membership to the MSBA?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Botts, thank you, Mrs. Pals, for the second. Any other thoughts, questions, comments, discussion, question? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approving membership to MSBA signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries, eight point six, resolution approving school district twenty-six eighty-nine long-term facility maintenance ten-year plan.
We have to do this, has to be submitted by July thirtieth, is it, Jackie?
Yep.
And this is how we are able to generate our revenues for long-term facility maintenance, which is, gives us lease levy authority, or not lease, gives us levying authority for that, which generates upwards of over three hundred thousand dollars a year for us to maintain our facilities. We have to make a ten-year plan, which shows what we're gonna do over ten years, because some things you can't do all at once, so other things you can. We actually hired ISG to help us with that, so what I've attached and what's up displayed here is the spreadsheet that we put together for the next ten years of what we will do, and you will see the numbers that we have, there's health and safety items we do every year, but we are looking at the patch milling overlay of the bus zone and Circle Drive next, next year. We have some caulking and tuck pointing that needs to be done at the middle school, high school, which I went out and learned about what's that is, 'cause I'm like, what is this and why? And it's really your, your joints and your seams outside the exterior, and they're not in bad shape, but like I, like Cal said, I mean, do you wanna wait till they're shot, and then you got water inside? And you do this stuff to maintain, to prevent bad things from happening, you don't wait till that goes to do that. So that's why they put these things on as an item that we need to do next year, and so that's where we've got, we've got some other maintenance things. One of the things I wanted to point out a little bit is the energy recovery wheels, heating, cooling coils and vibration insulation on our handlers, and you'll see year one of five, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We have, how many of those, a dozen? About twelve? If we were gonna do them all at one time, you can see that's gonna be over a million dollars. So we will do a couple a year, over the next five years, two or three a year. We've got a really large one on top of the gymnasium, and you've got another really large one in a couple of other areas, and then you've got smaller ones, so what we would do is, we would update those, and they're, it would be more efficient, they would do a better job, and they'd be quieter, so that's how we did that. We've got a hot water storage tank that's shot, and then we've got wrestling wall mats. Those would be our long-term facility maintenance things that we need to do next year. And then you'll see in twenty twenty-one, that's what we would do the following year, and, and we've got this list that we've put together that, and it reflects the work of ISG for that. Now, I do wanna add that this is middle school, high school only. We removed Brown and Hill items because of where we're at with our facility study. If something changes with our facility study and we don't do anything with those buildings, we've got a few million dollars of work at each building that needs to get done also. Now, this plan is a ten-year plan, this is what we'd like to do, but there is flexibility to change. So if, for example, a boiler goes down at Brown next year and we need to fix it, even though it, you know, may only use it, the building for three more years, we can adjust and we can make those changes. But we figured, let's put the middle school, high school items on there, the Brown and Hill are getting addressed by the committee and by our task force and the board, and if we do look at a bond, all of that stuff will go away because we're gonna, we're gonna redo those things, so. But this is the list, and like I said, it's subject to, to change, and if things come up, but we felt this was a reasonable ten-year plan. Next year, we basically add more on, and, you know, we'll look at where things are at and adjust if things need to be done. I told Cal, you know, in eight years, you may wanna hire ISG to do another assessment of where you're at and where things are at, so, but there's a lot of stuff in here that I'm not, I'm not an expert on any of this stuff, so don't ask me to talk too in depth about it, but I believe that they know what they're doing, there's some things that maybe we questioned the cost a little bit on, but that's what they had in their report, and that's what we put down for now, but we can probably look at doing some of those things, so. The other reports you'll see are from Jackie, those are the technical things that need to be sent into the state, and they reflect what we have on this spreadsheet, so. I don't know if you have any questions, or? And again, I, twenty twenty-five is when they said the roofing project, so when you look on there, in twenty twenty-five, I have a roofing project, year one of ten, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. That's basically doing a bond and doing all our roofs, we can also, when we get closer to that, if we wanna look at doing sections, we can, that's where this, every year, you redo this, and you look at where your roofs are at and where things are at. You may, you may not have to do roofs till twenty twenty-seven, you may wanna do them all at once, you may wanna do them in sections, but that's where this facility maintenance, these funds, give us that ability to do these things. I was asking Cal, I go before LTFM, I wasn't a superintendent, so I didn't pay attention to any of this stuff. I go, how do you maintain all your stuff when you didn't have these dollars? And, you know, that made budgeting tougher, because you were thinner, so, but now we have this, and so we should be keeping up with things, and I think that's what our community's been very clear to us about, they want us to take care of stuff, so this is taking care of stuff, and we've got the dollars to do it, so.
So I know at one of those first meetings we had with the task, not with the task force, but.
Just a community meeting?
We were talking about the roof on here, putting it in on the bond. I mean, what if, if we do put that in, and that would come out of this, would it take it out of the LTFM?
You can use.
If the community survey wants it.
You can use, when you do bonds, you can, you can use LTFM as a piece of that too, or you can use the bond, and then that frees up these dollars for other things, so. You can use different funding sources when you do big projects like that, which is something that we will have to talk about, you know.
'Cause you're not gonna put a roof on in so much every, in ten years, you're gonna do it at once after the thing.
Well, they built the building and put the roof on, so it's all the same age. And I don't know if roofs get aged in one area more than others, you know.
You can't patch it, can you, Cal, I mean, you can't say, we're gonna do this tenth over here, and.
Well, it's broken up into sections, you know, like, say, take over the library, you know, if that would be a section where it's been a problem child, where you have a lot of leaks and stuff, then you'd wanna do that first, you know, year one. You know, you don't have to do it all at once.
Okay.
Do it in sections, I've done Hill and Brown over the years, past years, that you just do a section at a time, you know. 'Cause otherwise, you are talking a lot of dollars.
I think ISG talked about that too, that we could separate it out and do it, and then just have it like on your long-term, you know, fund, and then you just do a section every year. I know he said something about that too.
We, we wanted to get it accounted for, and we went by their plan for twenty twenty-five, and like I said, they also told us that the roof needs replacing in the next eight to twelve years, so. There's some flexibility here, and, you know, we'll analyze it closer, and I think that's where your facilities committee, as we go on, these will be conversations of what do we wanna do, do we wanna do, you know, two sections, or, you know, and you just have to figure out how you wanna do it, but if you're gonna, you know, I don't know if you wanna bond for a million dollars, or if you wanna just set dollars aside, and, you know, there's, there's various ways you can do this, and that's just something we'll have to talk about, but.
Yeah, I wasn't sure.
And there are ways to, to check the roof too, they, you can go up through an infrared, and it, it pinpoints found areas, so that would help to determine what section you wanna do first, what next.
And what, and what kinda roof you wanna put on too, that can be.
Is there a twenty-third and a forty-year warranty to the roof?
Right now, our roof is okay, but it just is a conversation piece that's gonna come up in the next eight years, eight to ten years probably, you're gonna wanna have a plan, and that's what this will be, this'll just, so. I think that's what I wanted to say, is we're not set in stone. This is what we're looking at right now, and then every year, you analyze and evaluate, and, you know, you may have to make changes, 'cause there could be other things that come up also, so. Yep.
All right.
So, this is the plan, like I said, and, and Cal and I worked on this spreadsheet, I thought this was, I wanted to be able to have it in a little bit more common language than what some of the ISG stuff was and what we've done before, and what you see on some of this, the stuff that Jackie's prepared, that's mostly about codes and, you know, how she is. Accountant stuff, all the good stuff. Anyway, so, but this is where we're at, and, and we do have our LTFM does, our allocations go up a little bit with the years. That's also based on the age of our buildings, and when this building hits twenty years old, that's a milestone of a percentage that it goes up, and then once your building is twenty-five years old, that's the maximum amount you can get, so. What we do get, our elementaries are older, but their square footage is, I mean, they're just, there's fifty thousand square feet, and that's a fourth of this building, so this building generates most of our dollars, so. But I also don't want anybody to think like, if something happens at Hill Elementary this winter, we, we would have to be able to adjust, and we do have that flexibility, so we're not gonna go without doing something that is absolutely essential to the operations of the buildings. And if things change with our facility task force, we gotta put that back in here, and you can see how much we've got here, and then what happens when you start having to add those millions, we don't have enough to do everything.
Okay. So are we ready for the, to approve the resolution?
We need to approve the resolution.
Yep. And it looks like a roll call.
No, doesn't need to be.
Okay, I didn't.
Need a motion first.
Yeah.
So move.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Roy, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Pals, any other thoughts, questions, comments? I've got the resolution pulled up here. All right, hearing none, and it has to be a roll call? Usually, okay. All right.
Who seconded it, Marcy?
Marcy did, yes. Mrs. Talbert, we'll start with you.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Botts?
Yes.
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 All right, hearing it passes unanimously. Do we have to read this?
Nope.
Nope, good. Okay.
Great.
So we've approved the resolution to approve the school district number twenty-six eighty-nine long-term facility maintenance tenure plan.
We do eight seven and eight eight together.
Okay, perfect, we're gonna move on to eight seven and eight eight together, approve exemption for technical education instructor Lynn Heath, and also approve exemption for technical education instructor Cody Henricks.
South Central or Southwest Service Co-op has a couple of programs that our kids have access to. One is the Health Occupations course that's offered down in Laverne, and the other one is that CEO program. We're gonna offer some credit for those courses, because that, those teachers are career and tech ed teachers, and their licenses fall under the new licensure system, they wanted all the boards to approve these people to be basically tier one teachers. And how that works is, is that a school district can allow, can approve this, these people to teach, and that allows them to be a teacher for these districts. They cannot take that license and go down the road to another, their license doesn't work in any other, the boards have to approve them for this position, so. The Service Co-op has done their diligence, and these people have their background checks. I think the one, Mr. Henricks is a teacher, but he's teaching out of his licensure field, and the other teacher, Ms. Heath, is a nurse or LPN or, or.
Cinographer.
She's, she's, she's in the healthcare, but she doesn't have the teaching license, but she does have all of the, she knows what she's gonna be doing, so I would just recommend we, we approve both of these and.
Okay.
Do that, so.
Do I have a motion to approve the exemption for technical education for both Lynn and Cody?
So move.
Thank you, Mrs. Wees, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Talbert, any other thoughts, comments, question? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries, moving on to eight point nine, approve community survey contract proposal.
We have a couple of proposals for doing the community survey with our community task force and our facility study. The first is from Springstead, and the second is from School Perceptions. Both do have their methods by which they do things. School Perceptions has worked closely with ISG on a number of bond issues that have been successful, so their data has been pretty good. They, I think at the last task force meeting, you saw an example of the survey, and it actually gets to, the reason why ISG likes theirs is because you can actually use it as an education piece, 'cause they will put it together so that if you read it, you may not fill it out and send it back in, but you've at least read it, and you can get information on a lot of different things on there, so. Springstead is, the district that contracted with Springstead to do some surveying with the operating levies a few years ago, they also do very accurate work, and, but they have different methodologies, and it's, it's done a little bit differently. But both have standards by which they will conduct their surveys that I think are both fairly accurate. The issue comes down mostly to some pricing, and, you know, School Perceptions is, is, well, it costs less than Springstead, and so I don't know if the board, if you guys have any questions or thoughts?
Well, the School Perceptions that Rod showed us the other night were, looked very, very well. I mean, he had graphs, where you could read a whole page and then the vote, what you wanted, and that was, it was just very well put together, and it's sent by mail, it's sent by email, sent to, I think we could even get it on the website, did he say?
They, they will mail out the survey to everyone, so everyone will get a paper copy. You can either fill that out and mail it back in, or you can go online and do the survey, you'll get a code to do that, so there's a few different ways they do that. I think, you know, one of the things that I've been doing in my research is, is these surveys really start to give you some good feedback. You don't wanna go out and have an election and have it voted down and then go back, I mean, not that this is gonna be foolproof, but for the most part, you know, if, if they say, if the community says twenty-eight million and seventy percent approve twenty-eight million, you've probably got a pretty good chance that that'll work. And if you go thirty million and forty percent say, there's a line there, don't, don't push it, you know, over that. So I think that's what these surveys can do for you, is give you that information, and maybe we wanna stretch it, but usually the, the surveys are pretty accurate, so.
Do I have someone that's willing to recommend one of those, I know which one I would recommend, but is someone else willing to do that?
I would recommend using School Perceptions in this seat.
So make a motion to accept them?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Roy, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Talbert, any other thoughts, comments, questions, discussion?
I think when, when we do the agreement with them, then they come out, and they'll meet with myself and ISG, and they'll. meet with myself and ISG, and they'll probably come out with the task force and, and begin to put together this, these surveys, and they, they do the wording, and this is what they do, so we'll kind of let them, but we'll give them the information that we want to know about, and we're really interested in tax tolerances, how much can people feel like they can afford, where's that all at, I think we want to make sure that everybody understands that the bond on the middle school, high school's coming off, and, you know, the timing of all this, and then also the elementary configurations where we want that, you know, they might think we're probably going to survey also, do you want, are you okay with it out here, do you want it at one of the current, you know, that's, that's another item that we have, so we'll do that. Right now, we're talking about fifth grade, and fifth grade being a part of the elementary, so we would do surveys on that, we would also do survey questions on the ag classroom and the, um, greenhouse, and, you know, if you're feeling that community just isn't, they're going to give you some information that there's some things on here that just don't, don't do that, so. We're all unique, and again, I think that's where things will be at, so, that's part of what this will all be, you call for the survey, and then they'll kind of put it together with the task force, and I don't know if it comes back to the board for approval to be sent out, but we do have to get this part started anyway, so, but I'll keep you posted on how all that works.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, so all those in, it's hearing none, all those in favor of approving the Community Survey Contract Proposal from School Perception, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Somewhat.
Thank you, Mrs. Pals, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Talbert.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mrs. Talbert.
We do it at the same time, Katie.
All those in favor of adjourning, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? We're adjourned.